At this time, um, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Roll call please.
Ryan Giesi.
Present.
Cody Bribelski.
Present.
Thank you.
Present.
I am present.
For those that are able, let's uh stand and remove your cover and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, united. And just.
Are we recording?
Yes, it is recording. Thank you. Very good.
At this time, do we have a virtue card?
We do have a virtue card. And we've already practiced this a little bit tonight already with patience. Uh patience is quiet hope and trust that things will turn out right. You wait without complaining. You are tolerant and accepting of difficulties and mistakes. You picture the end in the beginning and persevere to meet your goals. Patience is a commitment to the future. You're practicing patience when you calmly tolerate a delay or confusion. Are willing to wait for things you want. Set goals and persevere until they are met. Do something now that will help you in the future. Accept things you cannot change with humor and grace. Are tolerant when mistakes are made. Affirmation, I am patient. I am gentle with others and myself when we make mistakes. I wait calmly. I trust that things will turn out right. Patience.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rieszowski. Um, for the education guidelines. With an open mind, we will establish an atmosphere that allows expression of all views. Even when views are not in line with all members. We will work collaboratively with the district administrator by having open and honest conversations around district priorities. We work collaboratively with all stakeholders to monitor key indicators. So that equitable teaching and learning results in high achievement. We worked toward building a trusting environment where both students and staff can reach their full potential. And celebrate successes in academics, the arts, and athletics. Thank you. Um, is it someone coming across? Okay. Am I speaking too loudly or anything? We're good. Very good.
It's her.
That's good to hear. Public comment. Do we have any public? Yes. Uh, Mrs. Leaker? Any comments?
Uh.
No comments.
No comments.
Okay. Um, I'd like to move on. Uh, no, C W. Is there an update? Is there an update with regards to CSW?
CW, I say no.
CWJ? No, very good. Over our term results, are we ready or should we move on?
We are ready. Mr., uh, so what we have tonight is we have uh Mr. Schmidt. Uh, Mrs. Peterson's been working on this project and so has Mr. Sprain. So uh who would like to get us started?
How about if I put, how about if I provide a little introduction to Rick and Jeannie in our group and then I'm going to turn over to Rick a little uh and Jeannie isn't here yet, but I anticipate her coming in any minute too. So. Uh, Rick and I are part of a. Oh, here she is. Hey, I was just providing an introduction to our group, Jeannie. Uh, and then I was gonna turn it over to you and Rick. Rick and I and a few other members of the community are part of a group that we. Our purpose is really to build trails for the purpose of educational and recreational opportunities. And right now we've been focusing on a segment of trails in Nacusa that's been behind the Humky Elementary. And Nacusa High School. And with that, I want to turn it over to Jeannie and Rick to kind of talk about. What work we have been doing, where we hope to go, and a little bit about the bigger vision.
Sure. Sure. I don't know. Uh, Jeannie, if you want to, you want to start to talk about Humky, you know, some of the, some of the action items we've been doing lately?
Um, sure. Um. I guess I feel like I got in. I've been active with a off, like a off um school grounds. Uh, trail and there's another woman on our, on our um group that's a community member that's very active in trail work. So Humky Hill has kind of been developed, but it's kind of been um neglected for a few years and you know, John had started that. Um, committee in the beginning of the year, John?
Back in October, yeah.
Yeah. And then lately we've um just tried to rebuild those and we're hoping to get um. Teachers um out there learning. Um, we've got different um things going. So in May, we. Put some um bar birch or some bark down uh that Rick provided from the city. And we trimmed the um back the trails and we're looking at them. Um, we're looking at marking the trails. So that the community and the teachers feel more comfortable out there um with the kids and looking at um. Providing in the future, then we're looking at um providing um more trails. We're also looking at doing this pod observation area that the high school kids with Mike. Um. How do you say his last name, John?
Hey, so he's our science teacher at the high school.
Yeah, and he's been real active with his kids out there. So he's excited about like um improving different areas and. Helping with that pond observation area and then um. So that's another step that we want to go. And then I don't know how familiar um some of you are about the Nell and the turtle that's out there that Nita cursed had been. Um, very instrumental in making. So then eventually it will reach out there. So um. We have the Lynn Creek Trail that has been developed by Rick and Pam. And then we have Humky that we're currently working on, Humky Hill Nature Trail. Then we're looking to extend it into the Nell, which would reach out behind um. Between the high school and the AMS. And again, it would all be school related plus community related. Um, and then um. I think, well, then connecting it even throughout the city and maybe even down through the river. Route, the blacktop um trail that goes through the river area. So I.
Yeah, just picking on up what Jeannie said, what's really exciting is uh, you know, this, this idea started, you know, probably what, three, four years ago when we. Uh, got together and worked on a park and open space plan and out of that came, boy, wouldn't it be nice to have some type of trail system out here? And it's really neat how this has come together now in the past couple of years. With the Lynn Hill, uh, you know, nature trail, Lynn Creek Nature Trail coming forward. And there's some real energy now. John got uh. Got this group going last, last year and um, I think it was tied John Moore with. I forget how the Stevens Point or the DNR uh forestry group is involved too from a scholastic point of view. So I, as from my point of view with the city side is that there's some real energy. To not only work on these educational trails, but tie them in a broader trail system uh for the greater community. So I, I think we got something really good going in, in a great direction right now. And it's, right now it's focused on the, on the school property, which is a good place to be.
I do want to put in a plug for mental health because I'm going to go that route also with it and it, and it just seems to, and I've talked to Terry about this before. Um, with the mental health, I just really feel there's a, a, a need um for the trails in serving not only the physical. And the mental with um educational academic, but also um. Emotional because I mean, Brian, you're on my screen and you know, I'm thinking of all our kids that, and I've taken kids out there for years and. It, it just warms my heart to think of how the kids were just so excited and they talked and you know, I think we do our morning meetings. And the kids share, but there's that, a whole different energy of kids outside in nature um. Doing this stuff. So um, I think, and not just the kids, but with the fact that it's the community related with it. I mean, to see Pam's energy for this. Is amazing and um it, it's just really exciting, I think. So.
Well, thank you. Now, and I want to honor Keith. Rick was pointing how this kind of evolved out of an educational opportunity. Over a year ago or more, Keith started, uh, well, actually even further back, he and I, he shared with me some of his vision for really taking advantage of the. Really the wonderful resource we have outside our school doors in terms of this natural. Um, environment to take advantage of that. He tapped into Stevens Point. He's brought some people onto campus and we've hooked up with them and they've. And they've helped provide some guidance with us and support to increase, increase place-based learning essentially. So Keith and uh, thank you again, Jeannie, for, for sharing that. Um. Anything else that you two want to highlight?
Yeah, I think the only other thing I'd highlight is not only is uh, you know, here in Nacusa, we're looking at, you know, these small individual trails and how they may connect. Uh, the city of Wisconsin Rapids and the other communities are taking a look at the trail system. The, you know, the hard blacktop trail that starts in Riverside Park and ends up in Beeren. And they're looking at making that one name throughout the region and start to market that as a, as a regional bike path in the area. And so the fact that it ties in in Nacusa, I think we have some opportunity too to. Make it, make a more of a name for how uh, how we can be like Jeannie talked about uh, na- nature-based and trail system tied into the area. So. So there's some good, I think some good energy out there right now on, on the trail systems.
Thanks. And, and just to kind of help provide an analogy for everybody too. Stevens Point has the green circle. In many ways, we kind of want to make our own little green circle, maybe not to the extent of which it goes around Stevens Point in terms of area, but in ma- in some ways, that whole simple idea. Of what that could look like going through our town and taking in some environmental resources with that too. Anything else you guys want to share?
Hmm. Not that I.
Well, the only other thing I think uh, you know, uh, Jeannie, I sent all the information. We're going to be making up some signs. Uh, and uh, getting the tra- trail markers out there and uh, there'll be some more activity over the next few months. So. I think Jeannie, you're, you and Pam are somewhat taking the lead on really fine tuning the, the, the trail aspect. So that'll be good to see over the next few months.
Yeah. Well, thank you. Any questions from the board?
Can they, can, can you guys hear us?
Yes.
Okay. I, I just wanted to commend you guys for your work on, on everything that you guys are working on. I know that mental wellness and um improving your health and. All your happiness and physical activity is really key, especially with reducing obesity and diabetes and just your mental health. So. For the community of Nacusa and the board, I want to commend you guys for all of your hard work and, and your aspirations for getting that going and keeping it moving too. So thank you, guys.
Thanks, Cody.
And I want to echo that thanks, you know, the passion, Jeannie, that you show and you know, John, you've always shown passion. And Rick, you know, the relationships that we have with the city and, you know, seeing how these programs grow out of that, you know, save for that comprehensive recreation plan. You know, to have those limited, you know, those use areas and you know. It's, it's nice to see these things come to fruition. So I want to thank you for that relationship with the city. And everybody involved. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Been, you know, kind of talking about kicking around for quite a few years already and this, it's really nice to see it happening.
Thank you. Thanks, Dave.
Thanks.
The time of year we can get out and enjoy it a little bit. So, good, good.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much. And now, one of our, one of our uh, one of our very special people for tonight's meeting. Um, it may indeed be her last for us, uh, Ms. Eleanor Leaker. Um. What are your thoughts tonight, Eleanor?
Uh, I don't have anything much for you guys. Um. We're working on passing down the um leadership. Uh, in student council. So this will most likely be my last time here, I think. Um, and then I'm just working on finishing schoolwork this week. So. Yeah.
How's it going? Give us an update.
Um, it's a little bit better than it was last time. Uh, but I have a lot to do in like three days and it's just weird to think that this is my last like high school. Projects and things that I have to work on. So.
Well, I, you know, you've been a real standout for the student representative. You've brought a voice, Eleanor, and a passion that we haven't seen before and. And I really, I value that. And you've got great things coming to you in your life, young lady. I'm very proud of you. Um, what are your plans after, after, after leaving us here?
Um, this summer I plan on still working at the Boys and Girls Club. Uh, probably at Alexander Middle School.
Okay.
And in the fall, I'll be double majoring in social work and psychology at Aurora University.
Fantastic. Well, we do have a, a couple of presents for you that we'll have to get to. We have your name, your, your name here that you get to take this along. This is yours. You, you know, your little nameplate. So make sure you get down here and get this and you can probably, probably display this anywhere you go in the future. So this is your. And we also have a certificate of appreciation for the time that, that you've given us. And so I. You know, I'd like to give you a big round of applause, Eleanor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other board members want to?
No, we really appreciate the effort that you put in every month and bringing us the updates from the school and from the student council. It's been a real blessing to see what you accomplished during this school year.
I, I just want to wish you the best in the future, Eleanor. You've been great. So anyways.
You've set a high bar. And so for the next person that comes in, we're going to really hold them to the, to the fire.
And it's. And it sounds like to me she might be prepping maybe to come back to Nacusa Public School someday to serve in a different capacity. So we'll see. Right, Eleanor?
Yeah, we'll see.
All right. I pray I'm around to see that day.
Right.
Yep, it's a blessing. So thank you again, Eleanor, and uh, good luck. It's going to be hard to say goodbye. But, um, Mr. Brian Grill.
Evening, everyone. How are you?
Doing well and, and yourself?
Doing well. Um. Just for me right now, there's a lot of grant application going on, a lot of grant updates that I'll be bringing to you guys in the future here. Um, Terry and I were made aware of some changes being made to Title IX and requirements around that. So I'm trying to figure out some of the details to inform. Our principals and there are going to be new training requirements coming this fall. Um, and some of our title grants, Title III and Title VI, they've extended it where we will be able to carry over some of those funds, but we're trying to make sure. We have a plan and how they can be used and spent, especially if the new school year. Is started virtually. I'm hoping not, but reality, there may be a component. So I'm trying to plan those dollars and then. Special education, we're also having a lot of regional meetings to discuss. Specialized services and what the federal updates are coming out in regards to compensatory services and how that may look. So. There's a lot of behind the scenes grant and special education work going on right now, but. I also want to take the time to thank our special education teachers for all the work that they're doing and. Like you know, we have a wonderful relationship with CISA Five because they've even done work to provide. Physical therapy and occupational therapy via telepresence. Which I don't know about you guys, but physical therapy over Zoom with some kindergarten and first graders is not the easiest task in the world. So they're truly trying to make sure to provide special education services during this, this time. So. I thank all of our providers and our special education staff.
Thank you, Brian. And you know, I think, you know, your role in director of typical services encompasses so many areas, you know, the work that, the changes that were, you know, forthcoming with Title IX. I know it's going to involve a lot of work and you know, that compliance, the compliance issues that you work with. I don't think, it, it's hard for people on the outside to realize. What a responsible idea. And I, I personally just want to thank you for that role that you take. And you know, developing a team that, that does serve the students so well. So thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Um. Ms. Lynn Knight.
I provide you a weekly update. So um, I'm just going to defer.
Defer. I want to thank you for that, those weekly updates. Um. Have the, any other board members want to make comments? Has that been helpful to you?
I like, I like hearing the updates. They really help us get the full picture of what's going on. So.
Thank you for the time you take in doing that one.
She gets to share some really good stuff. I'm, sometimes I'm like, gosh, I gotta outdo her on some of these updates. So that they have been well done. So thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, sure.
This is great. Okay, I would like to move into policy governance right now. We changed the agenda a little bit. We wanted to make sure that we. Got to these items on the board's responsibilities. And we also want to move through this in a, in a fashion. You know, to be succinct. We did meet Thursday and we met in a format such as this. And we had a very good conversation. And I would like to hit some of the high points from that, from that discussion. Um. The first one that we spoke about was the um, are for collaborative and responsible citizens. Um. There, this, this uh, this policy or results policy encompasses a great deal. And one, one part of the discussion was. Challenging or not challenging or asking Terry to look at this and, and simplify it possibly a little bit. Um, we have, or we have sections four point one through four point six. And a lot of these are complimentary in, in, in the way, in, in their expectations. And we want to make it easier for you as administrators to, to work with this. Um. I'd like to kind of just summarize what some of part of our discussion and then I would like to um. Give, give you an opportunity, administrators, I'm probably going to, going to. Just kind of prompt you for some, for some feedback. And board members, I would, I would highly encourage your feedback as I, as I summarize this. Um. Sections four point one through four point six. The morning message at Humky and AMS is, is a strength relative to all sections. It provides for a platform which addresses responsive classrooms, restorative justice, and many other creative ways which promote. Collaborative and responsible citizenship. These items also apply to NHS, although other mechanisms, although other mechanisms documented are used to achieve these results. With NHS, this would have been included advisories, cooperative learning strategies such as uh CPM. Um, this is a strong policy. The document, documentation contained within contains many more examples of the work that has been done and continues, continues to be done. This is, in my opinion, one of the strongest policies. Any comments from the board and anything I may have missed in our summary from our, our discussion last week?
No, I, I think that Brian had it head on with, you know, between Humky and middle school and the high school. What I had is just uh, to gradual release of responsibility for Humky. I think it's a stepping stone that gets them to AMS with the restorative justice, but then gets them to the high school. So. Um, I want to commend all the, the principles on putting all that together and, and working on those.
Um, one of the things that I got from our Thursday thing that they talked about was that this is an ongoing process too. This is not going to, it's not like, oh, we've arrived. No, it's always going to be. You know, looked at every year. It's, you know, and it's going to be continual. Which is, which is the way it should be.
The way it should be. And I think that, you know, what we've seen identified in here is a process that can be continued.
Correct.
Um. I'd like to. You know, John, is there anything that, you know, you know, you got your morning messages and the content is fantastic. Is there anything that you'd like to just highlight quickly?
Sure. You know, I'll just highlight real quickly that, you know, we're building people. And part of that is in that process of building people is to help them see their place in it. And so that's why in the classroom, we've spent a lot of time. About creating community and building relationships and see them of being a part of this and their role. And having the role of being as a member of that community, these are some responsibilities. So it's really, it's very. Um, detailed, intricate, and it's, 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 it is kind of complicated, but at the same time, it's, it's very purposeful. The whole process and it's, it's, so when we, we, the goal is to get the kids to. We always said the big goal, one of the big goals is to have all kids view and demonstrate cares. And those are basically five key virtues that we want kids to have when they leave Humky as they move forward on with their lives.
I'd like, I'd like to thank you, John, for that, you know, working with that program and then also your teachers who. Who are out there, the teachers and support staff that are out there reinforcing this, this mechanism throughout today. So thank you. Um, Mr. Black, are you out there?
Yes, and would just.
Anything that you.
Anything in there? A lot of it would just be that a, a site, one of the big focuses of the middle school is to help develop. You know, character skills, everything we're talking about that's necessary, um, such as responsibility, being able to go ahead and conflict resolution, all that type of stuff. Aren't character traits, they're skills. And you build those in the community. A big focus is being able to help students in advisory classes to be able to learn about those directly, but also to be able to. Belong to a larger group that have responsibilities towards them, have some idea of increasing responsibility on setting rules and those type of things. So. It's a long-term process that happens in every class and, and sort of the advisory period is the direct. Area where we sort of double down on that, but it's, you know, that type of stuff echoes throughout the whole school day and, you know, kids get better at that as we go.
Congratulations on you and your staff. Um, is Keith with us?
Yes, Keith is here.
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah.
I'd like to see.
Yeah, well, I think, you know, like we talked about on Thursday, the, you know, certainly the strategies being used in classrooms throughout the district helped to build this. Um, CPM was one that we highlighted with Mr. Genrich. Uh, workshop model, the work that's happening in advisory and freshman seminar, link crew, those different spots like that. But I was also struck by, you know, tonight, um, I'm also, I, I double as cub master for our local pack here in Nacusa and uh, we've got den meetings going on. And this is probably the policy that we have as a district that has the most translation to throughout the community. This is happening. The work is not just contained in the schools, but. We talked about co-curriculars on Thursday. We talked about part-time employment for students. But also, you know, all the various organizations, whether they be civic or church, but this is, this is work that isn't. It can't be done by schools alone. You know, this collaborative and, you know, and productive citizenry is, is a community responsibility. And uh, and this one, this result policy really hits home at that.
Very good point. And that was, you know, the one other topic that we discussed that. Maybe may provide an opportunity for improvement would be the inclusion. Of the extracurriculars ranging from FBLA Student Council to athletics. Um, our internal report card demonstrates that involvement in these extracurriculars. Are directly related to academic, academic achievement in these programs. As they are focused on building and nurturing collaborative and responsible citizenship. And this isn't just for the high school. It works for the middle school and even elementary. Um, so I think that's a. Um, so I think that's a, I, I hate to challenge more, but I think there's a, there's some component of that. And you touched on it, Keith, Mr. Johnson. Great thing. So that's, that's what I noted. Any other things as a board? I want to thank you for your, our good conversation on, on Thursday. And thank you for your input. Uh, the next one we have is, oh, yes, I should call for a motion. At this time, I would like to call for a motion to approve our four collaborative and responsible citizens as presented. So. We have a first by Mr. Schmidt, a second by Mr. Cody Prabelski. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried. OE thirteen, facilities management. Facilities management is not an easy task and I need to find my list here. You know, the strengths, the building and grounds maintenance plan developed by, by Lynn and Steve, by the business manager and building and ground supervisor, identifier identifies the needs of the district. Priorities are developed and addressed. And that's not easy because of the, the need for prioritization. And, you know, the fact that, you know, we, that we need to have to fund these types of things is come by significant accomplishment, uh, significant accomplishments within the last year. Include the NHS transformer upgrade among others. I want to make one note that at this point, the facility planning related to the capital refer, referendum will be reported separately and is not noted at this time. As I indicated, that building and grounds maintenance plan is very thorough and there are plans in place to address the other items. And again, their discussion addressed the difficulties in funding some of these projects. One discussion, one, one of the part of the discussion, I guess, you know, that that goes with the strength identified. Is there any other, I, any other feedback or Lynn? Is there anything that you would like to, did I, did I summarize those high points and the, and the the strengths from last year? Okay?
Yep, you did good.
Thank you. Any, any other comment?
I have a comment, comment for the other section.
Okay. Um, the one thing that we did know, and this was a brief discussion, and, and again, and it's just an opportunity for improvement or opportunity for for evaluation. But it was proposed that we put, we potentially planned for a more deliberate approach to budgeting through the use of Fund forty-six or other means for needs and upkeep for future items such as support of the athletic facility improvements provided by the capital referendum. And this is such a difficult one and, and, you know, there's nothing that we could have done differently over the last eleven years with financial, financial, places we were. The one thing that, you know, we were challenged in some of the community discussions was how did we get to this point, the planning aspect? And I think that, you know, we just as a board would like to be able to, you know, just have those means investigated for providing a more stable or a planned approach. Even though we don't know where our money's come, coming from, from one day or the next, Lynn. We appreciate that. So, you know, fully respect it. Um, but that's just a comment, uh, opportunity for improvement. If, if there's nothing else, uh.
Yeah, I just have, uh, just being proactive in the future, uh, we, we got approved for the referendum. I'm just being more proactive. So we're kind of on, you know, if it's the track or the softball field or the football field, just keeping up on the maintenance and being proactive. And then I know Mr. Mohammed isn't here tonight, but we discussed the, uh, the PA and the speaker system. I know that he probably wanted to address that. So I just, you know, maybe trying to get that finalized and pushed through at some point.
Thank you. There was a concern regarding safety and the PA, uh, there are plans to address that, and I know that Lynn is prioritizing that. And, you know, that work, I'm thinking, you thought by the end of the year, Lynn? Something like that. It's hard to tell, but yeah.
Yes, it is a priority. So, yeah, absolutely.
Can I make one comment to that?
Very much.
Brian's got a comment to that.
So Eric did do a lot of work, just so you know, bringing Heartland in. But some of that too, it's not just budget, if that's what you're wondering. Cause some of that too is there is only, when Eric and I talked with Heartland, there is one or two guys certified in the entire state to do the PA systems. So some of that too, Eric has it scheduled out and it's by the end of the year just because the lack of technicians in that area to complete that project. Cause there's not abundance of people that are able to do that. So I just want to give you an update on that, cause I wasn't at Thursday's workshop, but just so you know. Cause Eric and I have been working closely on that.
Thanks for bringing that up again. I think we heard that once before.
Yeah. Yeah.
Good to know, though. Thank you very much, Brian. And I think, Diana, you caught those additional items? Okay, thank you. At this time, uh, I'd like to put a call for a motion to approve OE thirteen, facilities management as presented. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Lynn, thank you very much for your work on that. I, you don't have any gray hairs. You're, it's wonderful. I'm amazed. So, thank you.
No gray hair, Lynn?
No gray hair. I can't see any.
I hide it all. A lot of the things has to go to the, um, to the maintenance, buildings and grounds and the custodial staff. Amazing job.
You do have a fantastic team and I do, I just remembered something I have to bring into the conversation. I'm sorry. I forgot, um, one item that is something that the board has discussed and Brian brought it up to me, and it's been something that I've had some feedback in the community. But you had referenced planning for the future as far as the upkeep of our grounds, facilities. And I think there needs to be a a plan to how we can more effectively manage our facilities when we look at things like lawn care or, 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 you know, preparing the, the fields and the maintenance of the fields. Right now, we've, we've worked, you know, Mr. Hersberg has done a great deal of work, but also I believe, uh, webs have been involved. And I don't know when that contract is up, but I think, you know, I'd like to make a recommendation, a continued improvement that we evaluate how we can more effectively and more economically and better for the district address those areas of facilities management. I should have gotten in this part of the discussion in during, before I closed it. But is there any comments about that or anything that, that you may have heard? Lynn, I'm sorry, I didn't get that in there. If there's any concerns, please let me know when it's appropriate. Thank you. Uh, what next one up is board.
GP four.
GP. Board job description. Are we doing our job? Well, we get, we should maybe have somebody else review us on this, because reviewing ourselves can be a tough thing. But we did note some, some concerns here. And what was noted and discussed, just to let you know, GP four is a board job description. It outlines the responsibilities that we have as board members to the stakeholders of, not only our community, but also our stakeholders within. The workshops and listening sessions which occurred in last year regarding the operating and capital referendums reinforce the need for the board to more effectively reach out and involve stakeholders within our district. The scope of this is rather broad, including our internal stakeholders as well as external stakeholders. And this is where I'm going to get myself in trouble and the board in trouble, maybe. We encourage administration to assist in identifying and scheduling opportunities for the Nikusa School Board to engage and communicate with our stakeholders. You know, if we can plan to have a meeting in Town of Rome, if we can plan to, you know, visit or have those sessions, we would like to be challenged to do so. If we can get it on the calendar, um, that can be a discussion point.
So are you talking actual school board meetings or just sessions where you about to have a conversation?
Either, or both. We, we in the past have done, say, a board meeting in the town of Rome. And it was really well attended. There is a lot of work on our part, but, um, that's a recommendation I'm gonna put in here. At this time, any other comments on the board?
I'm just curious though. So are you talking, you know, like numbers? Would you like to do one a quarter? One a quarter, okay. We can do that.
Is it okay?
So whether it be a board meeting someplace or a session?
Community listening session.
Okay.
Posted listening session on a topic, maybe updates on the referendum, maybe updates on, you know, where we are.
Well, maybe we go back to the places we were.
I think that might be a good idea.
Yeah.
We were well received and, you know, people were yearning for information.
Yes.
Yearning, I think they're gonna yearn for information as to what we're doing now that we've got the approval to do.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll be able to get some.
That's the burden we carry as board members to be that ambassador. And I want to thank administration, Lynn, Terry, and, you know, all the administrators for giving us the tools to be good, good ambassadors. Without policy governance, we didn't have these, these, this knowledge to be the ambassadors that we are empowered to be now. Um, so I want to thank, you know, Lynn, Terry, the work that you do, Diana, um, John, Nathan, Brian, and Keith.
And don't forget Lynn.
And Lynn, I said Lynn first, I thought.
We'll give her two. So.
She writes, she does sign. So, yes, Terry.
Well, are you wanting some of the, the staff tied back to that we once did?
I think we need to evaluate that, yes, because we did meet with the buildings on the referendum where we were involved with that morning meeting.
Okay, we could do that same format.
And I think the staff appreciated it. I certainly appreciate it. Being at Humke, being at AMS and, and the high school, I certainly appreciate that. I'm kind of jealous of that room. They have an AMS for their meeting.
They got it all over there.
They got it all.
Yeah. So that's, that will be the theme then throughout the whole year.
I think it's, it's important that we.
That we can listen to other things at the same.
Thank you. At this time, I call, I'd like to call for a motion to approve GP four board job description as presented. We have a motion in a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. We're good there. I really appreciate it. This is going far too easily, gentlemen. Consent agenda.
I'm sorry, we, there's a little.
Yeah, Brian, are you going off your computer?
No.
What circle?
I'm sorry, I missed something.
I am sorry. Yeah.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I did, I did see this in the computer earlier and I need to apologize for not bringing it in. Mr. Whitmore. Your, your floor.
Yes, so, uh, in your packets, you had a chance, and I think I've been giving you updates on updating the school calendar. If you recall, we put a school calendar out, I think in January. This is a new revised calendar that takes into account snow, snow days. We're going to do snow days differently next year. And we've got a committee that's going to be defining that more deliberately and purposely. Uh, but we're going to be looking at, I mean, we've practiced now doing snow days. Or, you know, actually these have all been practice snow days. But we've been doing this e-learning, so we're going to put a, a, a small group of people together to really take a look at what the essentials are within the district for, for those snow days, e-learning. And then what it might look like at each building will keep you updated. And we're going to be communicating and involving, uh, our parents in that as well.
That allows school to get done a little bit sooner than since there's no, like three or four days equipped in there for snow days.
Well, initially, or. Well, what, what it looks like is the calendar is now the calendar. So there's no changes. If we have five snow days, the kid, we're still gonna end in this calendar where our last day is, uh, June.
The answer to your question.
So, well, it isn't really releasing. What it has done is it has allowed us to build in some extra professional development for our staff that, and which reduces guest teachers, right, in some instances, so. Uh, the calendar then, so if you look at it, we've, and I've shared this all in updates. It's adding four professional development days for elementary and two for the high school. So what questions do you have?
I, the only comment that I have is that, you know, I think it's so important, but I think you've done it is to really have the teachers be involved in this decision and to make sure that we have their support for that.
So let's, let's actually hear from the principals. I'd, I'd really like you to hear, because it's gone through all the schools. You all had a chance to see Nathan's narrating version that went all staff. But let's please have just a couple of comments from our principals.
Sure, that'd be great. I, you know, I, I'm, I'm confident that it was done and I'm glad that it was done. So, yes, a couple of brief comments would be fine.
Question, so, uh, I think we do, like, give the kids all laptops or something so they can do their e-learning now. Are they gonna?
Four twelve, yes.
Yeah, are they gonna keep those so that we do the note?
We're gonna have to work, that committee is gonna work all those details out, yeah.
Cause, uh, you know, a snow day comes on us all of a sudden.
Right. We gotta work through those details, absolutely. Yes, right. But we did this, you know, you know, in a turn of a dime.
Yeah.
So we figured this committee with all this practice is going to be able to work together to define what that looks like and sounds like. So we want to have some, some not, or some essentials across the district. And then each building will have some autonomy to build what will work for their school. Teachers, kids and families. So let's hear from a couple principals about what you're hearing from staff at your buildings.
I, I can start. We, uh, we as a building, one of the things that we've been working on is to really, uh, improve our, um, literacy curriculum and having the time built in, like this is when we're gonna do it and when it happens. It allows us to, to get that work done in a coordinated fashion and to move forward on goals and pertaining to literacy. So we're appreciating that from that perspective, to have that time be done in a coordinated fashion during the school year. And, uh, extra in-service days permit that and just, we appreciate.
One thing I'd speak to at AMS, and again, we're living the process of distance learning right now. And so aware of some of the things that would come up. One thing I just really have to highlight that came as a bit of a eye opener to us as we got into this online experience is how many of our families do actually have some form of internet access? Devices is going to be the challenge on how. Devices is going to be the challenge on how we go ahead and find ways. But we're looking for ways to get flexibility and have a lot of that built in, but. We're a lot close. If you had asked me at the beginning of the year, how far we how close we were to a. Proposal like this, I would have said we're a long ways away. Having lived it for the last two months. We're a lot closer than we thought. And so we're aware of the bumps, we're aware of those type of things, but as. Our staff is talking about, they see it as opportunities. Staff would come up to us before we got. One of the things that made an impetus to lean into this a little bit is so many staff would come up and says, you know what? We can we can do this a little bit differently now. And you know, to a lot of this degree is several staff members had. Um, wondered how we would get this started and that sort of got our ball rolling a little bit.
And Brian, if you would just talk a little bit about your concern and challenge, because with all the good, we've got challenges to work through too. So could you just? Touch on that with uh making sure that special ed needs are met?
Sure.
Now you're right.
So are you talking next year with snow days in particular?
Correct.
So with it being county as a school day, and this was a challenge actually that came up when COVID first started that now. Was school districts talking snow days. So if we're making education mandatory on those days. We are responsible for special education services minute for minute for those days that we are out. So we'll have to talk about so, for example, say a student gets thirty minutes of EA ELA. Teaching and learning. We are then responsible to make sure either somehow when we return to school, we make up. Those thirty minutes and have it documented or somehow they get thirty minutes on that snow day. For special education services, which can be a challenge too, because like some other people have brought up. Technology wise, not all of our families have access to Zoom. Not all of our families can do that. Because especially if they're still working and especially at the kindergarten, elementary level is where it gets a little fuzzy. How we make up those minutes just because. A kindergartner can only maintain maybe five minutes on a screen. So if they get twenty minutes of help. You're not gonna have a kid stay in front of a screen for twenty minutes. So.
Thank you. Thank you. Keith, are you good? You or do you need to? You wanna shoot? Okay, so the other piece to this then is early releases in the past. And we and I share this in the update. We've done this early release for several years. What gets hard is staffing that early release with the majority of our kids staying at school. So what we've opted to do is we've opted to send kids home on the buses one hour early on Wednesdays. So kids will go home, the the middle school and high school kids will go home at one fifty-fiveish. And then our elementary kids will go home at two fifty-five.
So it goes the schools getting will stay the same. The buses are gonna come in.
Correct.
Just a change in.
So with that, the the job now is to really start communicating.
Yeah, because parents are gonna wonder.
Yeah. Right. And remember, we always have before and after school care for those families that need it. So.
And and one thing in in the work that's being done. You know, and and you know, certainly Mr. Grill was concerned about that contact time of those students is very valid. But you know, if we look at, you know, this is gonna be one day, two days, three days that we may have a potential snow day. And so we need to just keep that in perspective when we look at the body of work that we. Put towards it.
Sure.
But I think it's fantastic. Do I need to?
Yes, I'm.
I call for a motion to approve the calendar as presented.
So move.
We have a first and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carry. Ms. Lynn Knight. Breakfast and lunch prices.
Yep, this is an annual agenda item uh for the consideration of approval of the twenty 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 one school breakfast and lunch prices. Uh, basically the same memo that I've written in the past. We did our calculation that is required by DPI. And that calculation is indicating that we need to raise lunch prices by ten cents. So on the second page of the memo, um, you have the current prices which we're charging breakfast was all stay the same. There are no changes for breakfast. Uh, there is no change for reduced meal, which is at forty cents. That will stay at forty cents. There are changes to the lunch. Uh, you see the current prices, uh, student, adult and elderly, and they will all increase by ten cents. So we are recommending approval of the twenty 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 one school lunch prices. Reflecting a ten cent increase over the prior year price.
Fantastic. I'd like to put a motion on the floor to approve the lunch prices as presented.
Second.
We have a first and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carry. Next up. Is.
So um, since the the community has approved our capital referendum of two point nine million. Oh, I wanted to get started on obtaining those funds and do the borrowing immediately. So I contacted PMA. And Michelle Wyberg, which you have met and has presented um numerous times in the past. Um, she got right on that, but she I I assumed we would just do a bond. Which meant that it would be a lot of a lot of work, a lot of detailed work. We have to go through a bond rating. But she suggested that maybe a bank note would be the way to go and we could avoid a lot of the um. Detailed work that a bond would would force us to do and it it costs a lot more money too. So since the rates were so low, we decided to go out for bid uh to a few banks and we uh sent out the bid to the. Port Edward State Bank um and the Wood County Trust. We wanted to make sure we got some local banks in there. And we also sent them to some uh larger banks within state of Wisconsin. Well, Nukusa Port Edward State Bank uh called Baker Bankers Bank and asked if they would be willing to bid as well. And lo and behold, Nukusa Port Edward State Bank and Bankers Bank uh submitted the bid and they would split the two point nine million. And their interest rate was a collective one point eight percent, which includes all issuance costs, which is. Pretty amazing. We're really, really happy with that interest rate. Yeah, it was really exciting.
All right.
I'm just I'm just replaying the relay news. I didn't do anything. So um. The resolution is attached for your review. It's a lot of legal information. Uh, but we are recommending approval of the resolution awarding the sale of two point nine million general obligation promissory notes. Series twenty twenty, providing the form of the notes and levying a tax in connection therewith. That's all legal work. But you're basically saying we're giving the bit to the course of Port Edward State Bank and Bankers Bank. And we'll be able to get the money then as soon as possible and start working on our facility.
At this time, I'd like to call for a motion for a resolution awarding the sale of two point nine million. General obligation promissory notes, series two thousand twenty. For the Nukusa Partners Bank and Bankers Bank. We have a first and a second. Is roll call necessary?
Yes, please.
Roll call, please.
Cody Babelski.
Yes.
Dave Schmidt.
Yes.
Brian Yeezy.
Yes.
Brian behind. Uh, I go yes.
And again, this is a and I do have, we have some forms that. Lynn, we have to sign.
Yep, Diana will get them to you after the board meeting.
Okay, and this is for Pat and I, correct? Pat Rochuski and myself. Very good. Okay, we will make sure it's done. But I I really am so glad that it's local. This is a community project.
Yes.
And for Nukusa Partners Bank to be involved in this really makes this feel.
Community.
Yeah, it was exciting.
Yeah, I wouldn't, you know, if I was a bad man, Lynn, I I wouldn't have said that that was gonna work.
Me neither, so it just worked out perfect.
Yeah, I'm really, really happy. So thank you. It was great news. Um, anything else that you'd like to share with us this evening?
No, I think I'm good.
I really appreciate it, Lynn. Thank you. Mr. Johnson, we have the WI eight twenty 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 one membership renewal. Um, any comments or I can just call for a motion?
You can just, yeah, just come for the boat. It's just the annual membership renewal. No, no charge. We just need a board action on it.
Very good. I call for a motion to approve the WI eight twenty 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 one membership. We have a first by Cody, a second by Mr. David Schmidt. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carry. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Um, consent agenda. We have um donations that I would, you know, Mr. Cody, would you mind reviewing?
We have quite a few donations here. I'll surround the school nutrition donations. We have fifty dollars from Walmart. Forty dollars from Donna Winters, forty dollars from Bev Lamont. Three packages of bags from Nancy Hoffman, four cases of bags and two sleeves and containers and lids from Piggly Wiggly. A case of extra strong plastic bags from Nancy Sweet, I believe I pronounced that right. Um, and many, many bags from the NSD staff. And then we have backpack for kids donations here, ninety five dollars from Sacred Hearts, ninety dollars from Bethlehem Women Emissions. Twenty five dollars from Richard and Sandra Wilks, two dollars from Linda Odell. One hundred dollars from Jerry and Sharon. And then a hundred dollars from Joyce and Anthony Schulus. Thank you very much for all of our donors this month.
That's fantastic. It comes out of time of need and thank you. Thank you very much.
And all those bags, you might be wondering what we're doing with bags, that school nutrition program. This is all recycled bags. I mean, you know, they're serving hundreds of meals, so it comes in handy.
It's it's great to see this local support.
Yeah.
Any, Mr. 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 John's brain, is there anything that you'd like to say regarding? The four K?
We well, yeah, I can just quick summary here. We uh, long story short, we've been doing a study over the last. When we came to the conclusion that we were not going to renew our partnership with our four K partners. That was nothing against them. We came to the conclusion that we needed to make some improvements in our program. And so with that, we brought our four K partners onto campus here this next year. And with at all, four K students will be served at Humke next year and we worked that process through with um. Teachers and the four K. Our four K partners.
Very good. Thank you very much. Any other items within the consent agenda before I call for a motion? At this time, I. I don't want to go too fast. It's okay to go ahead. At this time, I'd like to call for a motion to approve the consent agenda as provided. We have a first and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carry. Thank you. We need to. Look at. I want to make sure. We have some busy times coming up here. June is a is a busy month and. We have a number of. Governance policy. They're not too bad to cover. There's some really good ones here. Um, will need to be prepared. Current year budget revision and budget amendments, membership power report. And a review of other portion of benefits and the AJR end of semester review. And we're also gonna be working with. Some evaluations with regards to district administrator. Any any questions on the meeting schedule film? Okay, at this time. I would. Like to adjourn and close session. Consideration of motion to adjourn adjourn in the closed session. Pursuant to section nineteen point eight five one C, Wisconsin statutes to consider. Employment promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee. Over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercise responsibility. Specifically to discuss employee evaluation. Motion on the floor. We have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
Corey Babelski.
Yes.
David Schmidt.
Yes.
I vote yes. Brian Yeezy.
Yes. Okay, I would like to thank everybody for being here tonight. Some fantastic work on the collaborative and responsible citizenship. Fantastic work on facilities management. Eleanor, if you're still there, I thank you for being part of our group. Did Eleanor go away?
He's here.
Give us a wave goodbye, Eleanor. Say goodbye.
She gotta talk at the same time. Eleanor, you gotta talk and wave.
She needs to stop in and pick those.
Yeah, when you can make arrangements with Diana to come in and pick them and stop up and pick up these items.
Thank you, team.
Great job.
Have a good night.
And I I just want to, did this microphone work out better, guys? Yeah, they can't hear me. Worked out better.
Thank you.
Yes, much better.
Gotta thank Jesse for the time he put in under Jesse and Eric.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.